Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. My colleagues on council, city staff, and invited guests. I welcome you all to our public work session for today. And I would ask that my colleagues please note your attendance electronically.
Five city council members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam City, interim city manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Tonight, we're going to begin our presentations with... This is the red light camera. Yes, there you are. If you would like to come to the podium and begin, please do. And for the record, state your name. You have a friend with you today.
Can everybody hear me? I will definitely give you my name. Let me check the clicker. Okay, we're good. So it's great to be back in Portsmouth. Thanks for having us tonight. My name is Marty Plank. I'm the VP at Ultimate. We've met before recently. Last time, we were talking about school zone enforcement. And tonight, we're going to talk about red light enforcement and school bus stop arm enforcement at a very high level and answer any questions you have. And I'll also let... I'd like to introduce our engineer, Raj.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Raj Ramfaw. I'm the Director of Operations at Ultimate. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Please let us know if you have any questions.
All right. We will get started. So once again, at Ultimate, our number one goal is the safety of the streets in and around your community. We do automated enforcement. We do school zone, work zone, red light, and stop arm. Again, an important slide. The problem is people are speeding at high rates. And if you look at pedestrians, the National Highway Safety Board, if a vehicle is going 20 miles an hour or less and hits a pedestrian, that pedestrian has a nine in 10 chance of survival. If that pedestrian gets hit at 30 miles an hour or higher, they have a five in 10 chance. And above 40, they have a one in 10 chance. And if you've ever witnessed a school zone or a work zone or somebody running a red light, they're usually speeding, going at a high rate of speed. The first thing that we want to talk to you about is school bus stop arm enforcement, the benefits of the program, the law, and answer any questions that you may have. So right now, we have a school bus stop arm in Suffolk, Virginia, live. We think we have 51 buses today. Very similar to school zone speed enforcement. We do have to pass a local ordinance to instill the state law. But penalties collected are $250 versus the school zone speed, which is $100. So if somebody passes a school bus stop arm, when that stop arm is out, it is a $250 fine. It also is a civil penalty, just like school zone speed. So there is no points and there's no insurance impact. Okay? Which is really important. If somebody passed a school bus stop arm and Sergeant Blankenship pulled them over, it'd be a much larger ticket, I'm sure. I didn't put any videos of actual violations, but I'm happy to share those at a later time if you'd like to see what a school bus, you know, infraction looks like. Okay? This is a simple installation, what it looks like. We really just drill one hole on the side of the bus, obviously. Those two cameras will capture the license plate. You have to have a picture of the license plate. That's all we capture. And then you have a camera up top that will capture the video. Car coming, it'll show it going right by the stop arm and going past the bus. Very simple installation. So I want to talk about red light. So red light enforcement, same, same. You have to have an ordinance passed to do red light enforcement. You can only have one system per 10,000 residents. So the law says you can do one intersection per 10,000 residents. I think in Portsmouth, you're a little under 100,000. So we're looking at, you could have potentially nine intersections that you enforce that. We did do a safety analysis for the city of Portsmouth, working with the police department. We have those results that I'll show you. And I'm glad to answer any questions about that. Red light is just a $50 fine. So $50, and it's a civil penalty. No insurance impact or any impact on your DMV record. Just like you've probably seen, if you've been by one of the school zones where we're enforcing, you'll see a sign that lets motorists know that there's photo enforcement taking place. We have to do the same thing with red light. So we will have a sign that lets motorists know that there is a red light camera ahead. So we give them a warning, you know, as they come to that intersection. I'm sure if you've ever traveled through other towns and Hampton Roads, you may have heard on your GPS, "red light camera ahead." That's probably the same thing, so... And then, obviously, we'll do an extensive public awareness campaign as the red light cameras go take effect, just like we did with speed. I will not get into too much into the technology. That's why I bought Raj. But this is a picture of what the red light system looks like. Very similar to the school zone speed camera, too. One thing we do use is we do use IR illuminators, too. We don't use a white flash. All right? So here's the engineering results. This is a very high level. This is one day, 12 hours. So from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, you can see the intersection that we took the results from. This does not count, you know, 7:01 PM to 6:59 AM. So think about that, too. There's more violations occurring outside of these hours. But we did do the 12-hour study. And you can see, the blue, that's the number of violations in that 12-hour period. So for instance, Town Point and Twin Pines, there's a lot of violations there. A lot of red light running. Our goal, obviously, is at a minimum to get to a 90% reduction of red light runners. So you can kind of see the results. Once these programs are live, we expect those numbers to drop dramatically. This is the last slide. Just like the school zone program, there is no cost to the city of Portsmouth. These are violator-funded. We do all the back office. But all of these violations, they do have to be signed off on and approved by a sworn law enforcement officer. And that's it.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for that presentation. I was looking at the engineering study, and I'm pretty sure I'm probably one of those Town Point Road and Twin Pines people.
That knows there's an issue or ran the red light.
I won't incriminate myself. But you may mention that the... So it doesn't affect people's points or insurance. But if a person does not pay, is there like a collection agency that will go to?
That's a great question. So just like the school zone speed program, you know, and this is up to the city of Portsmouth, right? We follow your lead. This is your program. Absolutely. We will send delinquent notices and we will utilize a collections agency to try to, you know, encourage people to pay that violation.
Got you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. So again, to the engineering study. So you have eight intersections shown here. Were those intersections selected based on data from accident rates? Or how did the police point you in the direction of these specific intersections?
So I believe, and I can let the sergeant talk, but I will... It was accident rates. It was probably the number of tickets written, the enforcement where they know they have issues and it's just a known problem area. And we're required to do a engineering study anyways. VDOT, you know, requires that. So... But there's several factors, which include, you know, accidents and if there's a problem with red light runners in that area.
Can your technology be used for running stop signs?
Oh, it definitely could, but legally, we couldn't do stop signs today. Does that make sense? It's just like, you think about school zone speed enforcement.
Yeah.
A lot of jurisdictions want to do it in residential areas. You know, you have a lot of residential areas or people drag racing on... Today, we cannot do it outside of school zones. So just like stop signs, which we could, yeah. It's kind of a good idea.
Yeah, and we have stop signs in neighborhoods that are kind of the key...
Dangerous.
...violation areas. And since we can't put speed cameras in those neighborhoods, if we could at least force people to stop where they're supposed to stop, I think that would help us.
The law does not allow it.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean, the idea doesn't come up of a warning program, right? Where we can send a warning as a public information, like public information announcement, to let that individual know. They're going to get a warning in the mail that shows a picture of them running the stop sign. But it's just a warning, right? And then, you know, they don't have to pay a ticket, though. There's no monetary value to it. But imagine if my daughter's starting to drive, you know, she's young. If I'm sure that if she ran a stop sign and our camera was there, I'm the registered owner of her vehicle, it'd be nice to know that she ran that stop sign so I'd have that conversation.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the long answer.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
So the technology that you have for the cameras, it is for running red lights, but is it speed attached to that as well?
So that's a great question. But when it comes to red light, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So we'll have, we track the light with the camera, but we also do radar. We're not tracking speed, but we need to know if somebody, you know, stopped at the stoplight. Yeah, I'll let him talk.
Sure. So there is a radar attached to it, just like the speed enforcement system, but the radar is primarily used to monitor or to watch the vehicle if it came to a complete stop.
Okay.
So we can use that for rolling red lights, which the majority of the violations generally come from are people that just fail to stop and then look and turn. So... But we're not doing speed and red light at the same intersection, yeah.
Okay, got it. And so with the technology that's in place and the engineering study, is that enough to service the whole city or will you have to add new cameras or equipment at a later date?
Today, we can definitely service the whole city. Based on that study, it's the determination of the city of Portsmouth and the police department. In context, those results are very similar to another jurisdiction, and they are doing every single intersection for reference.
So the law allows us to do about nine, nine systems, or sorry, not nine systems, but nine intersections. It doesn't say those nine intersections have to be always those nine intersections. It's just nine at a time.
Okay.
So if we hit the 90% goal that we're trying to do, there's nothing to say that we couldn't reevaluate and do another engineering study to say, okay, let's go to another intersection. Let's keep this moving along and help reduce the number somewhere else.
Yeah, you have accidents or, you know, another problem area, we could move that system.
I think I know one, but...
Well, I'll give you my card, and you can email me, and I'm glad to talk to the police about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's funny. I'm interested to... I always kind of know the school zones, but, you know, I live in Henrico County, and I definitely, you know, I see it every day where there's one intersection, and like I said, my daughter's learning how to drive, and I teach her, when that light turns green, you wait, look both ways, then go, because I've seen so many people. And that straight through one is dangerous, so...
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up question to the vice mayor's question. So I think you just said that the highest percentage of violators are people that don't stop when they make the right turn on red. Is that what I understood?
Yeah, sort of majority of the engineering study came from, yeah, it's right turn on red.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Tillage, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, mayor. So my question is related to the school bus cameras. So with the school bus cameras, we know if there is not a median, then both sides of traffic are supposed to stop. If there is one, then they're not supposed to stop on the other side. Now with the camera, can the camera decipher if there's a median there or not?
Yes. So that's a great question. Yes, it can, and it will capture. So you have a school bus that's in the far right-hand lane and, you know, letting children out. The stop arm is out. You know, we have violations where there's a car three lanes over, there's no median, they keep going. That's a violation, to your point.
Got you.
That's where you see the most violations, too, when it comes to stop arm. Those are the most dangerous. But yes, we can't decipher.
Got you. So the camera will be able to pick up a car that's two or three lanes over?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, once in a blue moon, maybe, maybe, I don't know, maybe something could happen you didn't. But those violations will never go out unless they're completely verified. The other piece of it, too, is when someone gets a violation on a stop arm, they can go to our site and they can view the violation, and they'll see that they violated the stop arm. And they can also call in, you know, a lot of times, people don't understand that, you know, just because you're two or three lanes over, you know, if there is a median in between, they don't have to stop per the law. But a lot of people don't understand that. If there's no median or divider there, they have to stop. And so we try to educate them.
Yeah, that'll be part of our public awareness.
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be great. During my time as a school bus driver, that was probably one of the biggest situations is when we had to stop on High Street West, and there's not a median. And traffic would be coming full-blown, and the bus is only 40 feet long, so you can't stop with so much traffic. So that's good to know.
Yeah, it's funny. I was going to put an example. I have examples of, you know, people coming by at a high rate of speed, and then you have some people, it looks like they're going 10 miles an hour, but they just go right by it like they never saw it, you know? So it's... But they're all dangerous, so...
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it?
Man! Awesome. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
Our next presentation is our disparity study, presented by Ms. Renetta Mitchell.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Good evening, ma'am.
Madam, sir, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to present the findings of the disparity study. I came before you, I want to say about 10, 11 months ago, maybe. I can't remember. Time flies. And just kind of gave you an update on where we were. We are done. Oh, it's great. It's there. And so I want to present the findings of the report for you. So I've been here before. Glad to be here, so I'm not going to spend any time talking about MGT Consulting and the length of time that we have been in business. Please actually do your second disparity study. But I do want to refresh your memory on the project scope. What was this study about? Why are we here? The project scope included identifying the relevant geographic market area. That is defined as where are the firms located in which you procure the majority of your contracts from? Where are those firms located? So we did that relevant geographic market. That relevant geographic market also defines if you were to implement an MWBE program, what area are you focused on that outreach and engagement of firms? So that's very important to identify that market area. Analyze the utilization of minority women-owned businesses in city contracting, and we'll talk about that, and I'll show you that analysis. Determine the estimates of minority and women business availability in your relevant market area. So how many MWBE firms are in your market area that provide the types of services and goods that you procure? And that's really important to make sure, in that context, to keep that in mind. Calculate whether there's statistical significant disparity between the utilization of MWBE firms and the availability of those firms, and we'll talk about that more as well. Gather and assess the qualitative or anecdotal data of the businesses in your relevant market area. What are businesses saying about the opportunity to do business with you, whether or not that their barrier or the impact of doing business is because of their race, ethnicity, or gender? And that information from the business community is a key element of your disparity study. We also conducted an economic impact analysis, which is generally not done with studies. But MGT has recently started conducting economic impact analysis of MWBE programs and spending, because we realize that businesses in the market area do serve as an economic boost or an economic engine in a market. So we'll talk more about that economic impact analysis of your spend for the study period and the data that we utilize. And then, of course, we provide some potential remedies that you can take into consideration to address some of the findings of the report. So I want to spend a little bit more time talking about the relevant geographic market area. As a reminder, we reviewed and assessed and analyzed data between July 1, 2016 through June 30 of 2021. Five years of your actual spend data or payment data to vendors that you did work with, that you contracted with. There were five industries, broad industries, but in the report, we break that down to purchasing this podium, to purchasing this microphone. But in the broad sense of how we looked at the study, there were five major business categories or industries. Construction, architectural and engineering, professional services, non-professional services, and goods and equipment. And so all of your analyses across the board will, in this presentation, gives you your availability disparity and your utilization by those five major categories. But again, in the report, it's all broken down very specifically by your six-digit NAICS So our findings concluded that your relevant geographic market area, where are the majority of the firms that you do business with located? They are located within your Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Newport News metropolitan statistical area. And so that includes several cities and counties within Virginia and three, in your particular area, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Chesapeake, but also three counties in North Carolina, Currituck, which are right beneath the border of Virginia and North Carolina. So what we found that in construction, and here are these categories, construction, 78% of your dollars were spent with firms in your relevant geographic market area. 92%, almost 93%, spent with firms in architecture and engineering, professional services, 36%. Non-professional services, 66%. Goods and equipment, 58%. So there's a pretty significant amount of businesses that are in your relevant geographic market area that you are doing business with. Utilization. There are five categories of specific business ownership classification that we analyze in your spend. Who are receiving these contracts and subcontracts on the types of contracts and services that you procure? African-American, Asian-American, Hispanic-American, Native American, and non-minority women are the business ownership classifications that we assessed in how much you're spending with those firms. So if you aggregate the minority groups, MBE firms were utilized at 2.25% of your $472 million that you spent during that five-year study period. Women-owned businesses received 5.96% of the $472 million that you spent during the study period. So in total, excuse me, 514 million, excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. 514 million that was spent during your study period. 8% of that went to minority and women-owned businesses. Availability estimates, and we talked about this, and I can't emphasize enough the importance of understanding your availability. The availability is determined based on the types of goods and services you procure of businesses in your relevant market area. So your availability in total for minority women-owned businesses in the Virginia Beach, Norfolk, MSA is 20%. So there's 20% availability in total. That breaks down to 11% of MBE availability and 8%, almost 9% in WBE availability in the marketplace. And in your report, we break down your availability by those specific NAICS codes as well. And that will assist you if there is a desire to implement specific contract goals for your contracts. So what does that all mean? Percentage of utilization divided by the percentage of availability times 100 gives you a ratio. And instead of throwing out more statistics and numbers, I just put it in plain text. What does that mean? Across the board, the very second column to your far left is your disparity ratio. Statistical significance is at a 5% variance. And that tells us that it's not by chance that this disparity occurs. So we run another statistical significance to make sure that it's not by chance. If that ratio is a 0 to 80, it's a ratio, not a percentage, 0 to 80, that tells us that there is substantial disparity, and then we test for statistical significance. If it's between 81 and 99, there's disparity, but there may be a cause. It may be one or two firms that are largely being utilized in that particular category. And I'm explaining this because that'll explain the bold as well. And then if it's 100 disparity, you're utilizing firms and spending money with firms at the same rate of your availability in the marketplace. And then if it's over 100, it's overutilization. So the bold text of disparity means that it is not only between that 0 to 80, but it's also statistically significant. And so African-American firms in all your categories have statistical significance. And if you add up all the MWBE firms together, there's statistical significance across the board. If it's not bolded, it doesn't mean that there still isn't disparity and there isn't a problem, but the statistical significance is just not weighted at the point where it is substantial. In addition to analyzing the quantitative data, we also analyze the private sector data, which is not your spend, but what's happening in the private sector in terms of whether or not minority women-owned firms are facing any type of discriminatory barriers because of their race, ethnicity, or gender. And so there's, again, a lot of statistics here, but the data we use for your private sector data is the survey of business owners presented by the United States Census Bureau, the American Business Survey, as well as the PUMS, which is the Public Use Microdata sample that we use that data, and the time period that we use the data. Overall, minority women-owned businesses face particular barriers in terms of revenue. They earn less revenue than their non-minority counterparts in the same industries. They also are less likely to be self-employed because of their race, ethnicity, and gender as well. So those are just, there's a lot there, but those are the two key factors that I wanted to go through today. The qualitative or anecdotal disparity, excuse me, analysis, the input from the business community, like I mentioned earlier, is extremely important. The quantitative is great. The qualitative kind of puts a face to the numbers, if you kind of think about that, you know? We see that there's disparity. The qualitative helps us to understand, well, why exactly? Why does that disparity exist? So we gathered qualitative data from various sources, one-on-one interviews, surveys, focus groups, business engagement meetings, online comments, et cetera. I pulled out three particular comments from the study, because one of the main purposes of the study is to determine whether or not... of the study is to determine whether or not discrimination is occurring in the marketplace. And it's important to do that private sector. I want to step back to that private sector because one of the tests for the city is to not perpetuate discrimination that may be happening in the private sector once you understand or realize that it is occurring. So along with your public sector data, whether or not there is disparity there, the private sector, if there's disparity there and you know about it, and the qualitative, if there's disparity or discrimination there, then that gives you the basis to take some sort of remedial action to address that. And so the three that I wanted to pull out, and there are many others in the study itself. One company just happened to say that when they started their business, they did not face discrimination. However, once they started trying to do business, that they did face discrimination because firms just would not do business with them. They got a lot of pushback, even though they were very qualified to do their line of work. Another company stated that there still exists a good old boy network being excluded from events, being excluded from bidding opportunities because they weren't part of that group, if you will. And then another business owner talks about not being invited. That's also another example of that good old boy network of just not being included and inclusive of those private conversations about business opportunities and contracts, et cetera. So I want to spend a second to talk about the economic impact analysis. So utilizing your data from the study from 2017 to 21, we looked at the direct, indirect, and induced impact of the dollars that are being spent with minority women-owned businesses and how that flows back into your economy. And we looked at that impact in terms of employment, wages, value add, which are just dollars spent throughout the community, and tax revenue back to the city. So what we find here is that through the 8% that you did spend with minority women-owned firms, it did create 175 jobs. So that's one positive impact. The labor income is about $8.8 million in that labor income. The value add of consumer spend and other spend within the area is $13 million. And the tax revenue back to the city is somewhere around $2.8 million. So that is the economic impact of when businesses in the area have the, all businesses in the area have the opportunity to win contracts, build their business, they spend. And it just, it's a, you know, we all know that cyclical event that happens. The return on investment is interesting as well because it basically says, if we were to invest X number of dollars into making sure that minority women-owned businesses had that opportunity to compete, what would be our payback? What would be our return back to the city from that investment? And so what you see here, starting from the bottom, is that if you, basically your purchasing budget, because you don't have an MWBE program budget, but purchasing is what we looked at. If you invested 25%, whatever your purchasing budget is, and you added 25% on top of that to specifically focus on MWBE engagement, your return on investment would be 216%. And it'd only take 1.6 years to pay back that. So if you have a million-dollar purchasing budget, you add 250,000, so you have a 1.25 purchasing budget, 250 of that is your MWBE budget, then it only takes 1.6 years to pay back that 250 if the program is operationalized. If you invested 50% of whatever your purchasing budget is and you added 50% of that total on top of that, your return on investment would be 58%. It would only take you 3.2 years to recoup that investment. So those are some very, you know, those are just high-level dollars, but there's an entire chapter in the report that talks about the return on investment, as well as the economic impact of MWBE spend within the marketplace. Am I good on time?
Okay.
Okay. Recommendations. And so, as you recall, the city conducted a disparity study in 2016, and there were some recommendations there. There are a few recommendations, and I apologize if I did not highlight, but I can look up which ones they were, that we wanted to continue to bring forth because some of the same issues were identified in the 2016 study that are still a concern here and a finding here. Some of the recommendations that we presented were actually, if implemented, could help you address some of those matching remedies, or, excuse me, issues. So talking about the race and gender neutral side, which is important to have that balance. There always needs to be a race and gender neutral component to any program. Establish an SBE program or a small business enterprise program to a degree in which your smaller firms, if the program is designed appropriately, your smaller firms within your area would have that opportunity to provide that economic impact as well to the region. Expand your data collection and management. Data collection is extremely important. Without data, I would not be able to do the job that I do. So we do always encourage you to continue to strengthen the type of data that you're maintaining so that you, you know, can continue to analyze how your spending is occurring in the marketplace. Long-term procurement forecast, and this was something that came out of the qualitative data collection of firms just not knowing when projects are about to bid. And by the time they do find out about projects, or even, you know, small purchases, by the time they do find out about them, they don't have enough time to adequately prepare for those solicitations. Develop formal strategies for business relations, with business relationships with organizations. There are organizations within the area, chambers, minority chambers, minority business groups, Hispanic chambers, I mean, even your own economic development. There are organizations that are already in the area that can really assist and propel some of the growth and development that may be needed for some of the firms. And if the city partners with those agencies and just really piggyback on what they are doing, it will only help not only the entire market area, but when firms go through these processes and they go through these courses, they come back better prepared to bid on your opportunities. So to partner with some of your organizations in the area that provide that type of professional and personal development. Adopt an audit clause for your contracts. I think one of the biggest challenges for this study and one of the biggest delays for this study is subcontractor data is extremely important to understand. And we were not able to get as much subcontractor data as we needed from those firms that held contracts with you. Some of the comments that we received is, I don't have to. It's not in my contract. And so having that audit clause so that you can always collect that type of data that you need for any other reason would help the next time you want to make sure that you, if you choose to do another disparity study in five years from now. Establish a business inclusion office. And, you know, I intentionally did not give this office a name, except it's just a business inclusion office. How you select to either have it specifically, excuse me, race and gender neutral or a combination of both, it is just an office that would be specifically dedicated to assist with small minority women businesses in your marketplace and assist with that outreach and providing those opportunities for them to compete, not only with direct contracts with you, but direct contracts with primes that have contracts with you as well. And unbundle contracts. This is really taking a large contract, and I get it, it's very easy for procurement director or purchasing agent to just have one contract to manage because they have 50 across the board. But sometimes those one or two contracts, very large contracts, if separated into smaller bites, if you will, for some of the businesses in the community, they would have an opportunity to bid on that, and that would assist them as well. Race and gender-based program recommendations, narrowly tailoring, and we've talked about this before, is extremely important where we've identified those disparities. Your program must be narrowly tailored if you choose to implement an MWBE program. Your program must be narrowly tailored to where those disparities exist. Okay? And then an MWBE program sunset. If you choose to implement an MWBE program, you must have a time period in which you reevaluate whether the disparity and the discrimination still exist before you continue the program. So basically, these programs cannot last forever without some sort of reevaluation on whether the problems still exist. So aspirational goals, based on your availability and utilization, these are aspirational goals that you can choose to adopt, that for every dollar you spend, whether it's a formal contract, whether it's an informal contract, whether it's picking up the phone and requesting a quote for something, to try to encourage minority women-owned businesses to compete for those particular contracts. And for every dollar you spend citywide, trying to achieve these goals in these categories as well. So overall, the goal would be 10%, but in each category, you want to try to aggregate all of your spend to where you have achieved these particular goals. These are not to be confused with specific contract goals if you choose to do that. So every contract that you issue, if you choose to do goals for those contracts, have to be evaluated based on the scope, the price, availability of firms, and then a different goal is set for that one. But that spin gets counted towards your annual aspirational goal. So in conclusion, there continues to be disparity in evidence of discrimination based on a firm's race, ethnicity, and gender in the Portsmouth marketplace. Utilization of MWBE firms over the five years is 8.12%. Availability of MWBE firms in your marketplace is 20.36%. And statistically significant disparity was identified for the business ownership classifications of African-American, Asian-American, Hispanic-Americans. The private sector also shows that the business earnings of minority businesses, minority and women-owned businesses, and the self-employment rates are much lower than those of their non-minority business owner counterparts. So business-to-business, age of company, all things being equal, minority women-owned businesses are significantly earning less than their non-minority counterparts. And that concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. And Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Ms. Mitchell, thank you for the presentation. We've been on this road for a long time, beginning with the school board. We noted even back then that there was a disparity. During that time period, the city was reluctant and resistant to doing a disparity study until we were finally able to get one done in 2015, actually. You presented to council in June of 2015.
I'm like family now.
Yeah, yeah. Sad to say, sad to say, sad to say. And it's sad because, and it's very troubling, highly troubling and disturbing what is being presented, particularly when you go to page eight of your presentation. And I hope, I hope that, I hope that the citizens are watching and conscious of what these numbers represent because rhetoric and numbers are two different things. This isn't rhetoric. We're dealing with facts here. So your analysis is showing on page eight that this city in procurement contracts spent
Correct.
Almost a half billion, over half billion dollars, approaching half billion. And of that 500, I'll just round it off and say $515 million, of that, this city only spent 1.43% of that with African-American contractors. In a city that is majority black, we see that this is egregious discrimination that this data is showing. And for these figures to show 1.43%, we're just about at the same place that we were back in 2015.
Yes. Your spend in 2015 was 1.73%.
So it actually went backwards. It actually went backwards. And this is intentional. It's not like this is happening just by happenstance, but this is happening because of intentional acts by the city to ignore the previous study. And the reason I'm saying this intentional and it was ignored because on page, and I hope, I hope that there's no justification, there's no justification for you spending $515 million and only 1% of that goes to black contractors. There's no justification for that. In your report, on page 17, this is how I know it's intentional. On page 17 of your report, your recommendations, chapter nine. The recommendations beginning on the race and gender neutral recommendations that you have here. I just highlighted three of them that were included in the 2015 study. The one, the second bullet point, expanded data collection and management. You made that recommendation in 2015 to expand the use of existing MUNIS system to capture race, ethnicity, gender of vendors. You also said to request and capture bidder proposed data, proposed subcontractors, subconsultants. And then you said, in the recommendation, MGT, request and capture payment data for all subcontractors and suppliers, and to expand the website to include MWBE program initiative policies and guidelines. You said that in 2015. And now here it is, what, eight years later? And we're still not doing this. It's intentional. It's intentional. The bullet point pertaining to this data collection, when you tie that in to the clause, this audit clause that you mentioned here, adopting audit clause for contracts, and you mentioned how the contractors say, we don't have to do it. Well, they're saying that because there's a culture within Portsmouth, within our city departments that allow for that type of attitude to be perpetuated. And now that we see that this data collection is not occurring, then that does not allow us to hold those contractors accountable for who they are contracting with. And I know it's intentional because we told the economic development authorities to include that information in contracts, that before it comes to council, that we need to see who the minority contractors are. And it was ignored intentionally. The other point up here is that under race and gender base, you have up here established a narrowly tailored MWBE program. You said that back in 2015. It was table 8.4. It's labeled narrowly tailored MWB program features, but it was ignored. It was ignored. The sunset, the sunset provision that you have up here last, the reason why you're saying that our programs have to have some type of time period whereby the programs will be reevaluated to see if they should continue. will be reevaluated to see if they should continue, that's the very reason why we had a second study done, because we are now supposed to be reevaluating. So when I keep hearing this reference to if we decide to implement an MWE program, we already had decided to implement an MWE program. Matter of fact, we passed ordinances to address that issue, but it has been ignored intentionally, and no one has been held accountable for it. And so the information that you're presenting is, is highly troubling and disturbing, particularly when I look at the fact that this being a majority-black city, and we're only contracting with 1.43% of our tax dollars, that's legalized robbery. And I'm, I'm, I'm highly disturbed. Interim City Manager, the Economic Development Director, is he here tonight?
No, sir.
Is any particular reason why he's not here tonight?
He wasn't required.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying. So how can you not be required to be at a presentation where you're presenting information pertaining to a major spend that's occurring in the city? You silenced him the last time that he was here to speak. And that's what I'm saying, these type of intentional ignoring, pushing to the side, marginalizing the issue of minority contracting is why we are here today. It's not all on your shoulder, but I do hold the Economic Development Person accountable for being here to explain to council, why is it that this program has not been implemented? And so this, this is egregious discrimination, it's intentional. I hope the citizens see that elections have consequences, because a previous council was aggressively pursuing this. What you're seeing happening now is that things have been kicked under the rug. And if that's what this city wants to do, then so be it. But don't say that we didn't know, because these are intentional actions. And Ms. Mitchell, I thank you for your report, and I thank you for also recommending race-conscious remedies and not just race-neutral.
My pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, for the presentation. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
My question is, I guess, how do we proceed with getting the recommendations implemented? I don't know if this is a question to the City, City Manager, how we proceed, and I guess I'll go ahead and ask part two about that. Under the race and gender-based programs, there's a time period that we, if we started this program, and if we don't see any changes in the disparities changing, I guess the question to the City Attorney, does this, is the city liable, or is there any legal or labeling that could be placed on the city for not following those recommendations? No?
So one of the things that I...
Madam, Interim City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
So one of the things that we actually implemented, if you go to the purchasing website, because it is a stretch beyond just economic development, is overall purchasing throughout the city when we look at contracts. And so one of the challenges that we were having when we started looking at the disparity study from 2016 to the disparity study when we began this process, is where are we lacking? Where is the gap? How do we bridge and close the gap? So one of the things we absolutely did from the very beginning is go to the purchasing website and update. What we were finding is some people didn't even know how to become a SWAM vendor, didn't know what they should do. So we began to update the website to give them additional information. One of the things that we also encountered when we started looking at the study from 2016, 2015, is that the recommendations were there, but the financial system that we were using, the functionality, we weren't using it at the capacity that it could be used for some of the recommendations from the past. And that's also been a part of what we've been trying to do to get us going. We have a long way to go, and it's with change in management and some other challenges that we have. The focus wasn't always here, but we have identified some of those areas. We've actually sent staff to Richmond to see how Richmond created their MWE business model, and they have an actual separate unit that they stood up. We met with Pam, or Pat. And so we're trying to pull together as, as quickly as we can, because we understand the disparity there. But there are many things that contribute that we have to really get a handle on, so that we can pursue this down the right path, and that it won't be ignored. We've identified some, some things, but we are already in the process. But the first thing is trying to educate the people in the community that this is, this is available, and trying to give them direction on how to even become a part of the SWAM, how to go. So it gives them links, tutorials. And again, I'm not excusing, because I wasn't here, but I've been here since we started this journey in 2021, 22, and now we're in 23. And so we are just trying to establish some things, especially as it relates to aspirational goals, because it doesn't take much for us to just add that to our contracts. And so again, it's across the board. And so I just want to identify with construction, with some engineering firms, we're looking at everything totality. But I'm, I'm not making any excuses by far, but I just didn't want it to go unsaid that we weren't making some strides in some areas to identify and bridge the gap, so that would help us move forward. That's it.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Mitchell, for, for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions to clarify the, for me, the understanding of the data that you were able to get to. So you mentioned, and we talked about this when you were here last time, that there's a lot of subcontractor data that's, that wasn't available, because, because in the contracts, we didn't require that the data be provided. Do you have some estimate of how much of the $515 million in contracts were to a prime contractor that we have no subcontractor data?
I do have a report for that, and I will get that to City Manager Terry, actually, this evening, when I get back to the hotel.
Okay.
Because I'll just pull up the databases. And as a matter of fact, the data that we have collected, prepped, and prepared for this study becomes yours. So we will, you know, at the conclusion of the study, when we make it final, we'll send you all of that data, but I will get that answer to you.
And if the prime, if the prime contractor in that case was a non-MWBE contractor, was, was the credit given to that category, non-MWBE, for 100% of the value of the contract?
Yes.
And similarly, if it was a MWE contractor, 100% of the value of the contract was, was, was bucketed in that category?
Unless they spent some money. So for, and construction's the easiest one to do.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll stay with that category, although there are opportunities in other categories, but construction's the easiest. So if you have the general contractor that has a $100,000 contract, and they hire an electrician at $25,000, we try to understand whether or not that electric, electrical firm is African-American, Asian-American, Native American.
Sure.
Or non-minority firm.
Right.
And so wherever that category is, then that 25,000 is subtracted, so we have a net of what the prime contract, general contractor's amount is. So your sum dollars still equal the same, but where the distribution of dollars are is how we break down the subcontractor information. So if that general contractor did not hire anyone, then that entire $100,000 goes to the non-MWBE.
Or if the general contractor didn't provide any data that he hired anyone.
Exactly.
And, and consumed the whole contract value himself, then you didn't have any option but to credit it all to, to whatever that category was.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. So, so to follow up on that question, do we now have, Madam Interim City Manager, a requirement to our procurement department to put a clause in our contracts that requires all prime vendors to report subcontractor data?
Well, it's a whole renewal.
So we're looking at the renewals. When we are renewing those contracts, we're adding those as a clause.
Okay, right. So, so any new contract that we issue, or any recompete contractor?
Right.
Will have that clause in it going forward?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So on the, let's see, I guess it's page eight, you split the, the spend between in-market and out-of-market, and showed that there was about 30% of the $515 million that has been spent out-of-market, right?
So yeah, this is your, yes, this is your total.
Yeah, so down, down at the bottom, in-market, 363, out-of-market, 151, so roughly 70/30. For the 30% that was spent out-of-market, were you able to get MWE data for that 30%?
No.
Okay, so, so right off the top, 30% of the spend?
To, to a point.
Okay.
Because that's whether or not they, so everyone, all of your dollars were included in the sub-data collection.
Okay.
Process.
Yep.
But most of the firms that we did, and I do remember this, and I'll get you the specific data, most of the data that we did receive on subcontractor data was for your firms inside of your market.
Yeah, I'm not talking about subcontractors. I'm talking about, so, so if a contract was issued to an out-of-market vendor?
Yes, we do identify whether or not. If we can identify that there are minority and women-owned businesses, we do identify that in your utilization.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the last question, so did you look at contract awards? And the reason I'm asking the question, I wonder if there, if, if you did, if there's any evidence that there were contracts awarded to non-MWBE firms instead of to an MWE firm, and we paid a premium, we paid a higher price to award it to a non-MWBE firm over an MWE firm that offered either a lower price or best value, or however we were, we were grading the contract for awards?
Excellent question. So we did not analyze award data. I need to remember whether or not we even received the award data with the payment data.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we generally do not analyze award data, because there's no guarantee that those dollars will actually reach the companies, because you can award a contract and then cancel it before anyone gets paid. So we actually look at the actual payment of those firms. I will also verify, when I look up that additional information for you tonight on the sub-data, I will verify whether we received any awards data, and let you know if that exists.
Yeah, so, so that would be even more insulting if it happened, if you have a MWE firm that had a lower price than a non-MWBE firm, and we somehow awarded to the non-MWBE firm over the, the lower-priced bid. So, but, but if, if you don't have evidence of that, then we may not know that, and, and maybe we'll have to dig into that in a different way. All right, thank, thank you for, for the report and for your answers.
Right, welcome.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, just in response to the City, Interim City Manager comments, the reason why we have policy is so that you don't have fluctuation, as you're talking about, and there were policies, ordinances that were passed to address it. Again, they were, they were ignored and not followed. To what Councilman Hugo raised, Ms. Mitchell, regarding the audit clause, I don't want us to, to leave with the impression that just because the city is now putting audit clause language in contracts, which if, if this audit clause language is saying that the prime has to disclose whether they're contracting with minority contractors, that's not enforceable, because the prime can always have language in there saying that they have contracted with a minority contractor to get the contract, which, which is part of the anecdotal results. It's that there were, in these, just so that we clear, the non-MWBE, these are majority-white firms that we're talking about, so that we don't get caught up in all the language. And so what these white firms were doing is that they would get the contract, tell the city that they're contracting with minority businesses, win the contract, and then take the contract away from the minority business, because there was never really a binding contract there. And so all this audit language isn't going to be anything unless the audit language has penalties in it. And from what I've seen, if, if these white contractors are not held economically accountable for it, they're not going to act out of goodwill. It's not going to happen. They, they don't function out of goodwill. Unless you hit them in the pocket, that's when they start adjusting their behavior. And so the audit clause has to have penalty language in it, that if you're saying you're going to contract with the minority contractors at a certain percentage, and you do not, then there needs to be penalty language. Have you seen any jurisdictions that have incorporated that?
I, I have, and I, and I want to clarify the audit clause provision versus having a contract compliance provision of your contracts. So the audit clause just basically says, if you accept this contract with the city, we can come back and ask you for data for up to X number of years, and you have to contractually provide that. The contract compliance side is what you are referring to, where firms will list MWE firms in the contract, or the proposal, or the bid, but then when they win, they never go fully, they never, never fully execute a contract with the MW. That's the contract compliance side. So I wanted to just kind of provide some clarity. Yes, I have seen quite a few agencies that provide liquidated damages or penalties for violating the MWE policy as part of the contract compliance, and there are quite a few agencies that actually do follow through with those liquidated damages for that as well.
So my question to the City Attorney, have we implemented compliance clause language in our contracts?
Of the, it really depends on the contracts that you're talking about.
Well, it's a yes, no. Do, do we implement compliance clause contracts whereby if contractors do not meet their MWE goal as stated in the contract, that there is some type of penalty, so?
Yeah, so we had one in the casino contract, I think that was one of the biggest ones that we had seen.
In which contract?
The casino contract. And if my memory serves me, and I can, I can provide more, there are some in certain procurement contracts where that language, where MBWE is required in there.
And so if, if that's the case, then why is it that the contracts that have come before the city, and, and we've been requesting this information, is never given?
I think it's because the audit clauses are missing. That's what we need to also include, which is what will require the data to be provided as well. I think the combination of the two would get us where we need for those two bullet points that you brought up earlier.
Right, so if, if a company is complying, and in order for them to comply, don't you have to have the data showing that they have been in compliance?
That's correct.
So if, if that data is showing that they're in compliance, then we would have to have the information in regards to whom they've been contracted.
That's what, you, we'd have to have the follow-through, and that's, I think, where we need to enforce more, is the follow-through, to make sure that data's being collected and those actual promises are being made.
Well, I'm saying, it, it has to have been collected if you have a compliance clause.
If no one is looking back to see that it's enforced, then it's a clause without punishment, if not.
So, so it's just in there, but there's no enforcement of it?
It depends on the situation. If all goes well, such as the casino, I think they provided those numbers to us, but other, it just depends on what the circuit ran.
So if there's no enforcement of it, then we will continue to see these type of results. And that's why I'm saying it's intentional, it's being intentionally ignored.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, but I do have one question. I'm, I'm interested, in your experience, obviously, you've done this for quite some time, and I know you, you brought forth to us some recommendations, and I thank you for those recommendations. One I liked in particular is to use other firms to ensure that our folks can get the professional qualifications and things that are needed to be competitive in the marketplace. But one of the things I wanted to ask you, if you were making a recommendation, and it's... But one of the things I wanted to ask you, i- if you were making a recommendation, and it's included in some of these, what are the top three areas would you, would you begin with? To, 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 to ensure equity and ensure that we are meeting that standard and moving in that direction to hold folks accountable and be fair and equitable in the process?
Thank you for that question. I think one of the first steps would be to begin to create a database of firms that are interested in working with you. And part two of that same first step is share that database with all staff in the city and ask them to utilize that database to reach out to firms to bid on opportunities. That's kind of, that's one of the, the biggest complaints when talking with staff, regardless of where I am across the country, talking with staff, we don't know where MWBEs are, we don't know who they are, we can't find a database. If you have a database, you make it available to all the staff, they can easily incorporate MWBE firms when they are going out to receive bids and quotes.
Okay.
So, again, these programs are designed as opportunities to compete, they are not set aside, they are not, you know, I'm going to call city manager Terry and just give her a contract. Non-minority firms, that should not be happening either, but these programs are not designed for that. So, that's step number one. Step number two is, is that I would definitely either through a partnership with another company or a partnership with another agency, establish some sort of contract compliance component to your contracts. Because you're absolutely right, you can put all the language you want in your contract, but if no one's holding them accountable to actually performing on those services that they're contracted to do, then they're not going to do it, it's not going to be done. And, um, you know, the work goes quickly, you held us accountable for a goal on this project, we have established and met that goal, and we have reported that back. So, just like you hold some contracts, all contracts should be held accountable to those same standard. So, if fiscally, you're not prepared to stand up in office and hire folks, find a very good partner that can help you with that and have that contract compliance piece. And I think the third component is, is really helping businesses understand what you buy. And to your point, I want to say Dr. Whitaker, but council member Whitaker, to your point, even though Portsmouth is a majority minority or black city, how many of those businesses are actually, how many of those people are actually in business is the key component that we want to focus on. And if they have those opportunities, and we heard from the private sector, minority businesses do not go into business, they will not go into self-employment at the same rates as their non-minority counterparts because of several reasons. Either don't know how, don't have the money, or don't have an interest because they've just never kind of visualized that. So, is there an opportunity to partner with other organizations like the Economic Development Department or, um, other organizations to, you know, talk about entrepreneurship? Norfolk State, Hampton has it, so, you know, there are ways to talk about that entrepreneurship for your industries. But, having businesses come in and understand what specifically do you procure? And how do you procure them? How often do you buy them? Are there repeat contracts that you do every six months, every twelve months, every two years, whatever the case may be? So that businesses can be prepared to actually now come and do business with you. Many others, but those are the top three that I would say.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, and interim city manager, you have, then Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
One of the things that we weren't doing until my tenure here is we weren't using EVA as an opportunity to identify those contractors who have already been vetted through the system and who have been identified. That is a system that we use now, and that is definitely something that we weren't doing in the past. And that's the list, it, it goes on with the list of vendors that we say, who can we use for this? And it gives you opportunity to vet those vendors out who've already been vetted out through the state, who've already been identified. And the functionality of that system is that, as it reports, you can see what contracts, you can see where, um, they've actually done business and the, uh, the authority they've had dollar-wise of what level they can use. Also, just quickly, a quick conversation we had in the back, we were talking about permitting. And I think as we, as, as this governing body, they understand, we've had conversations about some issues we had with permitting. With the majority of the contracts being, um, construction and otherwise, could you just quickly walk us, I mean, you have plenty of time, but I want them to understand the, the urgency, the value, and the necessity of addressing our permitting system and the, the complexity of what that holds.
Absolutely, so, part two of the contract that we held with you was to evaluate your permit process, your permitting process. The value of having an effective and efficient permitting process is it allows you to understand who some of those contractors are as well, but also to make sure that, of course, things are built safely and that they have the right structure, et cetera. So, the impact to that is that if minority and women-owned businesses are not able to even go through basic functions of getting a permit, getting it, you know, inspected and things of that nature, or even being inspected fairly based on their permit, then that's an impact to them doing business. So, there has to be an, a, a way that you effectively and efficiently be able to monitor and manage your permits and know exactly who, because, um, businesses continue to grow when they have those opportunities and when there's not so many hurdles to jump through. And the permitting process was a, a little bit of that. And interim city manager Terry, I do also want to just add to the use of the EVA system, it's great because it's streamlined, it's efficient, and it's a central point, but firms need to know that it exists. And so, finding an organization that you can, even, even the SWAM office in Richmond, even finding an organization to partner with and have an outreach so that businesses know, this is how the city does business, and this is where we go find you to do business, would be a huge help.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
In regards to the permitting process, I think Portsmouth is probably the only city that you can't do that purely online. I know I've heard contractors tell me they have to come down here and go to this office, go to that office. I think that's something that, in streamlining, because for minority businesses to have to leave the workplace, they're already limited by staff, and having to spend time, those are dollars that they, that cost them. And so, um, I think seriously looking at outlining that permit process would bring some fairness to the process as well. Also, um, just want to mention, Dr. Mitchell, when you were talking about with this being a majority-black city, one of the things that the anecdotal data and what this, uh, data also presents is that there are barriers to entry that these minority businesses, black, Hispanic, Asian face. And when they realize that the city is really not open to business for them, um, it becomes a reluctance to apply. We had a situation in this city where there was one law firm that represented PRHA for seventy-five years. That one law firm, because the word on the street was that you need not apply. That wasn't changed until there were some changes on city council to take into account and to bring some fairness to the table. The issue, the issue that you mentioned, again, on page seventeen, I want to bring you back to, under your race and gender neutral, that first bullet point, you said establish a small business enterprise program. Now, my issue with that is that ninety-nine point nine percent of the businesses in Virginia are small. And so, when, when we start lumping us into small, then minority businesses generally don't, unless, unless it is an intentional program, it's not going to trickle, trickle-down economics does not benefit black folks, okay? And so, unless there's an intentional program in place that's going to address those issues, it's, I, I just have an issue with putting us in small business.
Yes, I, I can absolutely understand that. So, MGT had the privilege of conducting a disparity study for the Commonwealth. And that was one of the things that we identified, is that ninety-nine percent of businesses were small based on the way that the Commonwealth defines small. But you have the opportunity to define your small business the way you choose, right? So, what many agencies do when they have a small business, um, program is that they take one-fourth of what the SBA's criteria. I can't remember, it's changed recently, but I can't remember what the construction one is, for example. Average three-year, I think it's twenty-five million dollar, um, gross revenue. That's, that's not a small business to me, but based on the federal standards, it is. If you take a fourth of that and apply it to whatever program you want, you're going to capture many of your MWBE firms here, not all, but some, right, many of them. Then you're also going to capture other businesses in the area as well who are small, who are still trying to provide to the economic impact to the area as well. So, it's all depends on how you define small. My recommendation is to never use federal standard, because everybody will be small in that definition.
So, to our city attorney, in an ordinance, are we able to define small? Okay.
Yeah, and I don't think you're, I don't think that, uh, yeah, so Dylan Rue, you do not have to go to the Commonwealth for, for that.
Not for that.
Well, I didn't, I was just curious, does the state have a definition of small?
The state does, as, as she indicated in it, it's sweeping, because it does include, like she said, ninety-nine percent. It does not preclude us from defining what small means to us. And, um, the city manager's office had begun the process of outlining some of these provisions in the minority business women, um, policy that we're working on. And so, that can be some other areas that we can incorporate into that policy as well as into the ordinance.
Okay, so now that we've received this report, what is going to be the follow-up and report back to council on what needs to be done? Because as I said, there was already a program that was supposed to have been in place, and it was not followed, and so.
Yes, sir, part of, thank you for that question, and part of what we have worked with, um, MGT on is, once this report has been developed, we will use the findings to then incorporate the policy, but also outline what recommendations from the twenty-sixteen, as well as this disparity study can go into effect for the minority business liaison, I think I'm, I'm using the wrong word, that this council has already outlined as a position to be, to, to be utilized in working through some of these issues. Because to simply put it on, uh, one entity is insufficient, we need someone who can look globally throughout the city to address some of that. And this coun- this council, council as a body, has already adopted that position, and so we'll work with the city manager's office to do that.
So, when will we get our report back?
Now that we have it, we will review, uh, the actual report is about a hundred and some odd pages, it's much larger than the packet that you have, and we've been working through it. So, I would suggest maybe after the new year, we would have some guidelines for, um, council and a presentation on what that looks like, because we'd have to give time, time for MGT to give us some, some outlines on that as well.
Councilwoman Tillich, sir, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. I think it's been a really good conversation, I think, you know, when we're speaking about equity and inclusion and economics and things of that nature, I think we have to be very intentional in our efforts of making that happen. Just speaking about the, the definition of small business, and I think it's very imperative for this council to define small business. During my time in the, working in the General Assembly, I know that there's been many of bills submitted trying to redefine what the definition of small business is. And I'm sure they're still happening, I think as long as Ms. Davis is going to the General Assembly, I'm sure we're still going to get those bills. But right now, I think it's with ten million dollars over three years or, and two-hundred-and-fifty employees or less. And as you may have mentioned, a lot of businesses fall in that category. And so, I think for us to be able to redefine that, um, I think is very important on how we move forward. But then also, as Dr. Whitaker may have mentioned too, is removing the barriers to entry when we're talking about SWAM certifications. I looked at the purchasing website, um, and it does show there's a link for people to say, like, if you are a minority-owned business, to go here and fill this out. But I think what people fail to understand is the lack of not knowing, the lack of education. And it is our job as a city government to help to educate our people. Uh, I feel like the word educate gets thrown around loosely, but we really don't do it. And so, we really need to be building our, our citizens and building our small businesses up for success. And I like the fact that you know, when you broke it down into race and gender-based recommendations, and you, you narrowly tailored it specifically to race and to gender, because you can't ignore the issue. And so, I think it's very important that when we're working together and helping to bring, when the city attorney brings back the report, the report at the turn of the year, that we really do look at putting, standing up a office. I would love to see a office of business inclusion in the city of Portsmouth, because I think it's, it's one thing for us to have to go to the purchasing department, for us to go to the zoning department, to go to the permit department, to go to economic development, we can have one office that kind of oversees it all. I think, and I think in Portsmouth, we kind of work in silos in a lot of things. So, be able to bring that under one roof, I think would be very efficient for the city of Portsmouth. And I, I just, actually just did a very long paper on this in my last semester for public procurement. So, I, I really feel like Portsmouth is on a, we, well, we have the ability to be on the right trajectory of success and the right side of history. But, um, I, I'm looking forward to this council having further conversation and hopefully sooner rather than later. But thank you again for this, this great presentation.
Very welcome, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, uh, Ms. Mitchell, um, Councilman Tillich brought up an issue about the SWAM. And I just want to make sure we're clear, with, with SWAM, that's just a small women, minority business getting certified. They're small women and minority. That doesn't exclude them from contracting if they are not SWAM-designated.
That's correct. You do not have to be certified to do work with you.
Right, because white businesses don't get certified.
Well, some do if they're small.
Yeah, but I mean, but, yeah, but I'm just saying, by race, they don't, they don't get certified. And, and so, I just want to make that clear, because a lot of times we'll say, well, they didn't know the SWAM process, as if that has something to do with them actually contracting.
Yeah, certification is definitely a business decision.
Yeah.
It has benefits, but it is a business decision for that business.
Right, right. The, the last thing I just want to mention is that, of course, these programs get challenged, particularly when you start implementing race-conscious remedies. And I'm just, want your opinion on this with the present structure of the Supreme Court and the attack and, that we've seen on affirmative action. The anecdotal section of your study, do you think that gives now importance and credence to the loophole that Roberts left in his decision? When he said that you can take into account experiences and taking into account past experiences that persons have had that have impacted on race?
So, I'm going to give you the disclaimer, I'm not an attorney.
No, you're right.
So, this is, this is definitely just my professional opinion, working in this space and understanding the, the, the case law around studies. A lot of the opinion from, um, the North Carolina and Michigan affirmative action case were centered around Crowson, sound familiar? And Crowson basically says you must have evidence, which is your data, your qualitative data, and you must be narrowly tailored to your remedy. And so, leaving open that door about the anecdotal, that's why anecdotal and qualitative data collection is one of the three key elements of a disparity study, quantitative, qualitative, and private sector. And so, that information is critical to being able to understand what's happening in the marketplace. Because numbers can tell you one thing, but people's lived experiences are very true. And so, the evidence of discrimination in marketplaces is, is very important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam City Manager?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Very welcome, my pleasure.
And Ms. Mitchell, I, I do want to, to say to you, thank you on behalf of our city, we're very grateful for the information you provided. It is my understanding that you may be moving on.
Yes. So as, I have been in minority and women-owned business development for 25 years, and I have been conducting disparity studies for 16. One of the passions of mine is actually hands-on working with businesses. So while disparity studies I love, they do, they're great work, I don't get to see the fruit of my labors, because I don't know what you're going to do when I'm done. And so I actually am going to start working, doing minority business development, program development, design, contract compliance, and holding businesses accountable to what they commit to.
Okay, so just don't forget about us, okay?
Absolutely. Portsmouth is one of my favorite places.
100%.
Absolutely.
Well, we want to wish you, in the Navy, we say, we wish you fair winds in following seas.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. For the city manager summary, 23-385 in the amount of $9,990 funding for BHS for developmental disability. 23-386, $57,992, that is emergency operations center disaster grant funding. 23-387, $53,800 from the fire department for the South Side Regional Hazardous Materials Response Team. 23-388, $923.52 for the fire department funding for VDEM, that's for equipment training and technical experience. 23-389 from the police department. This is an ordinance for the implementation of camera speed monitoring enforcement program. 23-390, police department, school bus video monitoring system enforcement. 23-391, intergovernmental affairs, adoption of a resolution for the 2024 federal legislative package. That concludes my summary.
Thank you, madam interim city manager. We do have a need to go into closed session, and Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, would you please read the closed session motion?
Yes, I have. I move to go into a closed meeting, A pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing or considering candidates for appointment to boards and commissions, and B pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice specifically regarding the position of city assessor.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a second?
Second.
Would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. We are enclosed. We do have a need to certify to come out of close.
Yes.
And Madam Vice Mayor, would you please read the motion?
Yes, mayor. I hereby move that each council member certify to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only pub business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. And that concludes our closed session. We are going to take a five-minute break. We will reconvene for a regular council meeting at 7:11.